Say anything. Recorded and off on, uh. Right, live?
It's not live. Or, or, or that call you.
And, and the public can, but.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is six o'clock and it is time to open the, uh, the meeting for September nineteenth, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. If you would stand with us, Commissioner Wilder will lead us in the invocation. Commissioner Henderson will lead us in our pledge.
By his please. Good Lord, we want to thank you for this day, another great day in Columbia County. Time for us to gather and discuss county business and in spite of all of our citizens. Please look over us, lead us, guide us to make the, the wise choice, the proper choices. The guests that you look over are our first responders, our firemen, our officers here that, that look out for us. All of our service members that are overseas protecting our freedoms. The Lord, we just ask all these things.
Federal allegiance by the states of America. Public, hands, one nation, God, individual, justice, law.
Thank you, be seated. If I could ask you to please silence your cell phones. And, uh, we do have five commissioners present tonight. Uh, you might notice a new face, uh, up here with us tonight. Like to welcome Russell Wilder as the countywide appointee. Commissioner Chuck Evans, uh, stepped down as he has been appointed as Doug Flanagan's Assistant Juvenile Court, I guess, Justice. And, uh, he felt like that, uh, with the duties that he was going to incur there, that, uh, he could not provide us with the, the, the time we needed here. And made the decision, so, uh, Mr. Wilder has, has gracefully accepted the position. He will be the countywide appointee. Uh, I was, and Connie Malir has chosen to retain me as her District One representative to replace Commissioner Evans. So, uh, with that being said, uh, gentlemen, you've had a chance to review the minutes from the previous meeting. If there are no changes to the minutes as they were submitted to you, uh, I'll need a change or a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes from the September fifth meeting.
Do I hear a second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Uh, gentlemen, you've had a chance to, uh, review the agenda. I believe we do have two items to add before we need a motion for approval. Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, move that we add, uh, H one B Landscape Plan Review for Solar Farm at Yelton Road. And H two D one Preliminary Platte Anderson Farms, Section One.
Are there any other items that need to be added? If not, I'll need a motion for approval as the agenda's been amended.
Mr. Chairman, I make an approval to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve the amended agenda passes five zero. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on October first, two thousand nineteen at six P M. in these chambers. You wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Jennifer Neal. And she'll give you, uh, a request to speak for them. We're less formal in these chambers. If you'd like to speak for or against one of the issues that we have presented in our public hearing tonight, raise your hand. We'll ask you to come up to the microphone. And please, uh, condense your, your remarks, uh, to, to be within three to five minutes. And, uh, if you have something that's not on the agenda that you wish to address, we do have a, uh, an open mic for public comments at the end of, uh, the meeting. That being said, we do have an item of unfinished business that was tabled from September fifth. Uh, Mr. Butler, file R Z one nine zero nine zero four.
Senator, I have a request for rezoning, uh, from C one to S one, where they can use for a self-storage facility at five zero six zero High Meadows Drive. Location of the property on the south side of Columbia Road. I have the intersection of William Few, uh, just to the east property. This is, shows the zoning of the property. I mean, you have a, a pretty wide mixture of, uh, both uses and also zonings. Across street, you have some RA, um, and also some M two and also the S one. For Cory, uh, to the west, you have a mixture of M two. Again, that's also for, um, well, you have a concrete plant, also the quarry as well to, that's one to the, uh, west. South, you have an S one for, uh, an existing church. Immediately adjacent to it, to the east, you have an RA piece of property as well. And few, right here. Airly view of the site again, currently it's undeveloped, does have, um, you know, existing structures on the site. You can see the, uh, concrete plant next door as well as a church. An aerial view of the site, uh, with a three D view. Also, street view of the site, again, you have, uh, along Columbia Road and along High Meadows Drive. And a plot of the property. And also the concept plan. Uh, their request is for, uh, three buildings totaling about seventy-five thousand square feet, uh, of self, of self-storage. Uh, the front one here will be three stories. Uh, would be approximately sixty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five square feet. It's fully climate-controlled. Uh, the back two buildings here are, uh, the, the, or Phase Two, excuse me, will add the back two buildings. Uh, those will be seven thousand square feet and three thousand square feet. Includes both traditional, uh, both traditional and climate control within these two, um, units. Uh, building setbacks are posed at twenty, thirty feet from Columbia Road and twenty feet from High Meadows Drive, uh, with twenty feet to the two property lines on the sides. Uh, concept plan, again, you have, you have vehi- vehicular circulation around the building itself. Uh, one of the things that we do have a condition for is, uh, showing that, uh, vehicles can get around this. Uh, one of the, one of the concerns is this little, this little piece here, um, that may be a little tight, so that will be required at site plan. Uh, with the actual buildings themselves, uh, actions indicate that proposed development, uh, will meet all Columbia County landscape requirements. And also, you have a twenty-foot structural buffer, um, along the eastern and western, eastern and southern property lines. You also have, you see the buildings here, um, these are not identical, but will be similar to what is proposed. Again, a masonry wainscote, uh, and you have stucco as well. And it may be maximum twenty-five percent architectural metal panels on each elevation. Uh, let's see, two single-story buildings that have similar finish on the west elevations and elevations facing south. In terms of, you know, future land use, uh, you have the community crossroad, um, that is here at William Few, which does kind of allow, I feel as, as I was saying before, you saw, you saw some, uh, CC here. Um, it does allow for some more commercial uses to be in that area. Uh, you do have, uh, to the west, you know, more industrial uses, uh, wi- within this area. Again, it is, it is within the neighborhood's character area that does, you know, it's supposed to be for, uh, residential development. However, due to the, uh, development of the nearby properties, um, this is also one thing from our code, that a, uh, self-storage facility is more of an industrial use. Uh, does provide a nice step down from, you know, the more commercial that could be developed here, going into the more heavier industrial on this side of the property. Uh, staff is recommending approval with, uh, several conditions. Again, one of those is that elevations and material board require approval with the Planning Commission. Again, we haven't seen, um, anything from them that's official, so that's why it will be coming back. And also address screening of the other ponds, uh, from High Meadows Drive and Columbia Road during site plan review. And again, these vehicular circulation ready, uh, as, as was discussed. And that includes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions of staff? This is a public hearing, which we will reopen. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Is there anything additional you'd like us to consider? Yep, come and give, come forward and give us your name and home address, please, sir.
Good evening. Lamar McCoy with S D Clifton. Uh, we're the general contractor representing Brook, Brooks Whitmire. Uh, we just appreciate your consideration. We're, we're wanting to build a first-class, uh, climate-controlled, uh, secure building where people could come in and access it with remote keys or mag strips or whatever you want to call them. Uh, so he's, he's, he's wanted to build a very nice upscale property. One that you saw the picture of is in Somerville, actually. So if either you go to Somerville, our building is going to be very similar to that. Uh, he actually loves that building and if, if I wouldn't be sued, we could probably copy it, but we don't want to get into that. Uh, but we're, we're open to any questions and, you know, he's, he's just wanting to have a first-class facility. Uh, if you've read the feasibility studies, uh, everything within the, like, five projects that were, or five self-storage buildings that were done in the area within a five, six mile range are at ninety-one to ninety-nine percent capacity. But we feel that there is a need, otherwise, you know, he wouldn't want to build here. But we do appreciate the consideration.
I do. I've not seen one three stories high. Could you talk about that a little bit?
Yes, sir. Um, they're, they're very popular along the coast. If you've gone down to Charleston or Savannah or even Somerville, there's, there's a lot of them. And I assume the reason they're going that way is because of the cost of properties. So people are going.
People don't complain about them being much a story.
No, sir. Now, they'll have two elevators, but it's not like you're trying to lug your stuff up and downstairs or anything like that. Uh, the entire building be conditioned, so everything within that building is secure. Every access point will have, be have, uh, like I said, a card swipe or either a code for you to enter. So it's not like people can be in there just vagrantly wandering around.
I've noticed in Greenville, in the, the times that I'm up there, I'm up there quite often, they've got some that are four stories.
Yeah.
That have been built recently.
I, I guess people are building houses smaller or, or we're just collecting more stuff. I'm not sure which is.
Not even home.
And the closest ones to him would be the ones Nellin built over on.
I would think so, probably those over.
Far away back in.
On William Few. Probably.
You have any idea of his occupancy?
I don't know. He hasn't been open long. I don't think, whether he finished a few months.
Been open about sixty days.
Yeah, it hasn't been open.
Um, and I know that we approved one for a group down by the food line by William Few Parkway. Not by William Few, but by Hereford Farm Road. And, uh, I think Hollywood bought those and then Hollywood sold to a group. And I don't know what their intention is as far as that property goes.
I do know there's one in the feasibility state and I don't remember the name of it, but it was only open for three months and it was thirty percent capacity. I think it's in the feasibility state.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Thank you, sir. We appreciate you. Is there anyone that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion.
I make a motion for approval of R Z nineteen oh nine oh four.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. All right, gentlemen, this is a little unusual. We need a motion to reconsider a landscape plan review for, uh, tax map parcel ID, uh, twenty-six, parcel sixteen A. If I could have that motion.
And just for clarity, it has to be somebody that was actually at the meeting, so it's one of you three.
We need to make a motion to.
To reconsider.
Reconsider.
Mr. Butler will deliver the information that we need to reconsider.
Chair, I make a motion to reconsider. Gate plan review.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? I guess it's passed three zero or five zero for reconsideration.
You got at least three.
The people that vote, okay.
You have a majority, no matter what.
All right. Mr. Butler, reconsider away.
This is a request, um, the property was, uh, rezoned to S one about a year ago, uh, for a solar farm. Uh, one of the conditions of that rezoning is they had to come back and have their landscape plan be reviewed by the Planning Commission. Uh, one of the things from that, we've been working with the applicant, uh, quite a bit, uh, throughout this whole process. I'm not going to get into the details, we did that last time, of all the backstory on this. Uh, one of the, one of the issues that kind of popped up, um, issue is maybe a strong word, but again, you do have, let me go to location of it, I'm sorry. This location of the property at Yelton and Ray Owens Road. And the zoning of the property, again, S one. Landscape plan will be going over here in a minute. Uh, one of the things was that you had the, the conditions that were specified with the, uh, with the rezoning applicant, uh, with the rezoning application itself. Uh, you had a condition added that was a thirty, a forty-five feet total, um, buffer, thirty feet of which was to be undisturbed, fifteen feet that could be. Also had a condition of a two-hundred-foot area, this, and, and these two corners, that was to be left undisturbed. Also had a last condition that said that the landscape architect, the Columbia County Landscape Architect, could work with the applicant, what trees to remove. Um, that, those kind of don't work together. Um, so we kind of used, uh, something that could have been a, a hurdle to, you know, make a better buffer in this case. Uh, one of the things that was done, you know, through the, uh, working with the applicant was to get a sixty-foot buffer out of this. Um, did allow some clearing of the property, uh, within the buffer to take out very large trees, which again, provide more, they don't provide a buffer low, low down. Uh, you know, height, uh, height to the actual.
Fifty feet or higher.
That's correct. Um, so that was, that was done beforehand. Uh, they went and cleared the property, all of that. Uh, the last meeting on September fifth, we did have a concerned citizen come by, uh, to express, uh, some concerns with the property and we, that's where it was tabled. Have further review of it. Uh, we, we went out on September tenth with the citizen, uh, myself, Jonathan Williams, Landscape Architect of Columbia County, and also representative of the developer, um, Southern Current. Discuss, we walked the entire site, uh, for lack of a better term here. Uh, going over every single section that, you know, was a little light in terms of the actual trees, uh, kind of how, how to remedy the situation here. Um, again, this is a, the, the option that's presented here is better than what it would have been, the actual condition as written, um, in our opinion. So in terms of the plan itself, the blue you see there, uh, is a sixty-foot wide natural buffer. And behind that, you have a fifteen-foot, the con, but we have two colors, two, two green colors here, but the one that's behind the blue is, uh, to be replanted. Uh, one of the conditions from the, uh, from, from the, uh, zoning, passing it over here, that was supposed to be a staggered evergreen to provide full, full coverage to be able, not, not be able to see back in there at all. Uh, so that's shown on the plan, then you have the thirty-foot buffer, um, on this side of the property. Uh, one of the things that we worked through with the, kind of to get the applicant and also staff and concerned citizen was, we, we did add, we did add some conditions to this. Uh, actually, let me show you the site again. Uh, an aerial view, not provided by the county, this is actually the concerned citizen that actually provided this. Uh, but this shows, you know, what has been done, um, in the area. Um, again, it was, it was cleared, was logged. Um, this is sixty feet, uh, right here. And that's the thing is that, you know, sixty feet on the ground doesn't look like much. Um, from the air, you can kind of see it, yeah, there's, there, there's definitely some coverage there, but you know, if, if you're on the ground side of it, not a ton there. So in terms of the other conditions, again, these are kind of agreed to with, with all parties. Uh, one of the things is, again, that two-hundred by two-hundred-foot buffer, you know, was, it was disturbed, uh, we can't, we can't really deny that. But again, it must be replanted with native, native species, underplace trees that are removed. Again, this will be a consultation with Columbia County Landscape Architect, the contractor and the landowner, to determine proper placement of these trees and types. Again, native species, uh, prior here. Uh, the second condition is that prior to and after installation of the planted buffer, again, the landscape contractor will consult with the landscape architect to determine appropriate plant types and locations. And this is to any area that is thin, this is where it's going to be, okay, you need to have more in this location. One of the things too that was added, uh, utilization of larger shrubs and trees will be discretion of Columbia County Landscape Architect. So if there's an area that is particularly bad that you can kind of look at and say, uh, more, you have a larger shrub, you know, it is already at a certain height, and that could be, that could be provided in that location. And that will be worked out with our staff and developer. Uh, lastly, do you have a condition? It speaks to any, any, any reveal of additional trees, require approval of Columbia County Landscape Architect. One thing that's, that's really key here is that they're, they're still in plan review. Um, so they have that, they also have the permitting, once they are through with that, they have the permitting side where they get their, you know, all their permits and everything. And you have the CO, the certificates of occupier use this, this, or this, uh, this facility. There's been multiple checks with this. This is not one of those, here's your plan, go have fun. You know, there are multiple times this has been looked at. And this is something that, you know, we think that, you know, provide the best buffer as possible and also address the concerns of, really everyone involved with the project. That includes, uh, staff recommendation.
This is not a public hearing?
It can be. I do know the applicant is here, I do know that the property owner is supposed to be here, so if you have any questions or they would like to speak.
All right, well, we'll go ahead and make it under, keep, put it under a public hearing then. Um, any questions of staff, gentlemen? I would like to commend you all for taking the time you have on this. I know that, uh, it's unusual for a, uh, an unconcerned party, either financially or developmentally, to get this involved with it. But I appreciate you taking the time with a concerned resident of the county and, uh, considering his input. I know that's kind of unusual. I don't know that I've ever seen anybody as involved in the, the years I've been, been here on this board. Uh, with that being said, uh, this is a public hearing, is the applicant here? Yes, would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Please give us your name and home address.
Hi, good evening. Uh, I'm Jeff Clayton, I'm with Southern Current. I are the applicant for the, uh, solar farm. My home address is five one five eight Celtic Drive, North Charleston, South Carolina, uh, two nine four oh five. Uh, we don't have any difficulty with, uh, the place on us for the agreement, staff recommendations. Have anything to add? Would.
Gentlemen, do you have questions? Mr. Clayton? Okay, thank you, sir.
We have met with the staff and on-site a couple of times.
Awesome, we appreciate you.
Thanks.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against this particular landscape plan review? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the updated landscape plan for the solar farm at Yelton Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Hey, under new business, we've got, uh, one item for discussion and we have four items that are going to be presented as information only, or three items, I see. Uh, Ms. Boltie, if you could, uh, start us out with, uh, H two B one.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a temporary use authorization at sixty-six fifty-five Cobham Road. Um, this property is located on the north side of Cobham Road, um, near the Bertles Farm subdivision, is currently zoned RA Residential Agriculture. Um, the applicant has reached, recently purchased the property and is preparing, um, to build a house. Uh, she is requesting permission to keep a travel trailer on the property to use on weekends and while she's working on the land and clearing the site for the home. This authorization would expire in one year. Um, and she is aware of that and is working towards, um, submitting the house plans to, to have the house built within that year. Staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, this is not a public hearing. Do you have any questions of staff? Motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the temporary authorization of Cobham.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. All right, Ms. Boltie, if you could give us the, uh, the information on, uh, H two, B two, B three, and B four.
Sir, uh, this first one is a temporary use authorization at thirty-five eighty-five Riverwatch Parkway. This is for a construction trailer on a, um, C two general commercial property. Location is here off, on the north side of Riverwatch. And the construction trailer will be located at the front of the site while the building is under construction. Um, this was approved on September ninth.
This is the mobile, they, they outfit vans and cars.
Yes, sir.
That was supposed to start construction last June.
Finally getting underway. Uh, the second one is a temporary use authorization for a sales office. Um, this is in Whispering Pines, um, currently zoned PUD, planned unit development. The location at the back in Section Three. And the site plan, they will set it up similar to how it's been set up in previous sections with a parking area, they'll include the street tree, the sidewalk, um, handicap ramp, all of that. This is the photo of where it's currently sitting in the front of Whispering Pines, so the, the site in Section Three will look similar to this. And this was also approved on September ninth. Third, um, temporary use that for information only is another construction trailer off Cooper Drive. Um, this property is also C two general commercial. Um, it is in a development that crosses the county line. They are preparing to build on Lot Two here and have permission from the property owner on the adjacent property to put the construction trailer on that site during construction. Uh, this was approved on September tenth.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Ms. Boltie, if we can continue, we have a provisional home occupation for Fur Babies.
Yes, sir, this is a, a request from Shannon McCarty for a mobile dog grooming business to be located at twelve thirty-two Fury's Ferry Road. Um, this property is on the west side of Fury's Ferry Road, just north of Hardy McManus, and is currently zoned R one, single-family residential. The applicant is partnering with, uh, two other family members to, to start this mobile business. Um, this property, in fact, belongs to her aunt, who is one of those investors. Um, she is proposing to keep her, her van on this property for the mobile dog grooming business. She would come to the property, pick up the van for the day and, and leave. So you're looking at one additional trip, um, to the site, the, a very small traffic concern. Um, she does have plans to expand in the future. Would potentially eventually include a second van, part-time employee to, to operate, um, with her. Would work potentially alternating shifts to begin with until the second van could be purchased. A typical home occupation does limit, um, the business to one commercial vehicle. With a provisional, we do have the ability to allow them to have two. Again, on a, on a large site, two vehicles is reasonable, is not likely to cause a concern. This is the aerial of the property, showing they do have, um, a goo- a good bit of parking available. Um, you will see the driveway crosses back off of their, off of this parcel that is also property owned by the, the same property owner. So they're not impacting any, any additional neighbors there. Um, staff is, oh, there's the existing site, um, house and the landscaping along the road. We are recommending approval, um, with the condition that they are limited to two commercial vehicles parked on the property overnight.
Oh, she's doing a store and a vehicle.
Yes, sir.
Are these the new overheads from G I S?
Uh, this one is not. We do have the new overheads available as of today, as far as I know, but, um, but we, we didn't get them into the PowerPoint quite that fast.
They're, they're, they're very nice.
All right, gentlemen, any questions? Not a public hearing? Yes, ma'am.
Have we talked to any neighbors or anything, there's not going to be any issues?
Have there been any phone calls at all?
This is not a public hearing, it's not advertised, um, because the intent of a provisional home occupation is still the neighbors should not be impacted by it. If we were to get complaints, it is in the, the provisional home occupation code that we can revoke the license if they are causing impacts to their neighbors.
Any other questions? We'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
I'll make a motion to approve the provisional home occupation for Fur Babies Inc. at twenty, twelve thirty-two Fury's Ferry Road.
Second. Let him hang on his first motion?
Case him later.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Approve carries five zero. And I was hoping everybody would be quiet for you. Uh, all right, we do have a preliminary plat tonight, this is our second added item, uh, Anderson Farms, Section One, Ms. Boltie.
Yes, sir, this is for the first section of a new subdivision off Lewisville Road. Ninety-six acres and forty-three lots. Um, this is the location on the east side of Lewisville Road, um, adjacent to the quarry area, you can see, showing up in the, the nice orange there. Um, this property was rezoned R one earlier this year. The aerial of the site, uh, was previously hayfield, large parts of it, so large parts of it are already cleared. Um, we'll see, that'll have an impact on the, the plans themselves. Um, there are large areas of the required buffering that will show up as having to be planted by the developer as a result of that. Um, this first section includes forty-three lots. They all meet the minimum lot size of forty thousand square feet and the health department has confirmed that they are all suitable for either conventional or possibly alternative septic systems. Um, the majority should be able to utilize conventional systems. Um, there is a fifty-foot buffer required on Lewisville Road that is shown, as well as the perimeter buffers adjacent to, uh, different zonings. Um, there is no open space required in an R one development, but there is an existing Georgia Power easement and existing ponds that are noted as common area to be deeded to the HOA. And staff is recommending approval.
Just locked, or you're satisfied with the site distances on both this, on both entrances? And those, for, because it's fifty-five miles an hour, it'd be six hundred and twenty-five feet? Okay, awesome. Okay, gentlemen, any other questions?
Didn't we talk at one time about, excuse me, an egress, egress lane down through some of that? Guess we didn't do anything. But it is a decal. Yeah. I just remembered something about, we discussed it at one time.
There was, there was a conversation about stubbing out the, uh.
There was, there was a conversation about stubbing out the backside of it.
For future development?
Just meet that.
This section doesn't, doesn't cover that portion of the property, this is just the front half of the site.
Oh, so this is?
So the developable portion stops somewhere in the middle. When they bring in section two, that's when that stubout will come into play.
Okay. Any other questions? This is not a public hearing, so we'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the preliminary plat for Anderson Farms, section one.
Do your second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Ms. Boltie, final plat for Purbeck Lane.
Yes, sir, this is a final plat for seven lots at the end of Purbeck Lane, currently zoned R3, single-family residential. These are at the back of an existing subdivision, they basically just extended the road to create a new cul-de-sac. Aerial of the site, it is split by this creek, and there's a good bit of environmental features around that creek, you know, areas they really didn't want to touch. So what they have done with this plat is they have extended Purbeck Lane and put six lots around that new cul-de-sac, and left the remainder as one large lot, that's the seventh lot. That has a driveway easement right through here, that driveway is already actually paved and built to get access to that large seventh lot. The minimum lot size for the R3 lots is 12,466 square feet is platted, that greatly exceeds the requirement, which is 7,500 square feet. There is a pending request for a minor waiver on lot four, which I'm sure you'll see is information only before too long, once the plat is approved, and that has a unique parcel ID. As you can see, there's a sewer easement across a good bit of the lot that really limits their buildable area there. Otherwise, the lots will follow the R3 requirements for setbacks, 50 feet from the center line of the road and 10 feet from the side and rear property lines. Staff, this is the existing site, see the new cul-de-sac there, and staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions of staff? Hey, this is not a public hearing, so we'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
I make a motion to approve the final plat for Purbeck Lane, seven lots located at 431 Purbeck Lane.
Do your second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Approve carries five zero. Ms. Boltie, file RZ 190911, minor S1 revision.
Yes, sir, this is a minor revision to an existing S1 special zoning off Blanchard Woods Drive. This is the existing location of the Sale Charter School. Property is located on the north side of Blanchard Woods Drive, off Blanchard Road, and is currently zoned S1 special for the school. You see, it's surrounded to the west and the south, largely to the east by residential property, commercial to the north towards Washington Road. This is the aerial of the site, was developed for the school. Their approved site plan, and we did have a recent revision last year to add future buildings to this plan. They have not started construction on those buildings at this time. They have acquired two storage sheds, which are the small red squares, approximate location, that they have placed on the property for storage use for the school. This did require a minor revision to the site plan, the storage sheds are obviously not that large building that was currently shown. When they eventually move forward with construction on that building, the sheds will obviously have to be relocated. This is the existing site, the sheds are tucked back behind the existing school building, in the center of the site where they're unlikely to impact any of the neighbors. What those two sheds look like. And staff is recommending approval with conditions, carrying over conditions from the previous rezoning files. Reminder that the relocation of the buildings or addition of other buildings does require revision to the approved S1 plan, and that if any additional electrical, mechanical, any additional work is done to the sheds, they will need the appropriate permits for that work. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
Questions of staff?
Just to be clear, the second condition states that if buildings are moved, it has to come back before us again.
Yes, sir.
And they were put there, was there, no, they were going there, or this is a backfill approval?
This is a backfill approval, we did not know they were going there.
A lot of rules people don't know.
Well, they're stored, they're storage sheds, I'm sure they.
Right, and they're fairly small.
Yeah.
About 160 square feet each, so they may not have been aware that they needed permits and needed process.
Questions? This is not a public hearing, so, gentlemen, I need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Make a motion to approve RZ 1909-11 with conditions?
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approve carries five zero. We've got four items under public hearings tonight, Ms. Boltie, file RZ 190909.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a conditional use for massage at 3801 Washington Road. And this property is located on the north side of Washington Road, directly across from the intersection with Davis Road, and is currently zoned C2 general commercial. The majority of the surrounding properties are also zoned C2 until you get across Martinez Boulevard, and then you do have the C3, the heavier commercial. The aerial of the site, it is a developed commercial property, see the existing shopping center that is on the site. This property is located in the Martinez Activity Center, this is a mixed-use center that's intended to have shops and restaurants and other businesses in the center. The applicant has indicated that she would have a maximum of three therapists at this location, all of whom would hold their own state licenses. There would be no more than three clients at a time in this location, and they were, their hours of operation would be by appointment only, seven days a week. Surrounding properties, again, are commercial in nature and are within the activity centers, this is an appropriate area for this business, and staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions of staff?
This is a new location for an existing.
It's a new location for people that are already at another location, I'm not going to say it's a new location for that business, they're going off on their own.
So this particular business isn't shutting down at one strip center and opening up at another?
No, it's two therapists moving from a different location.
Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, ma'am, would you all come forward and give us your name and home address, and any additional information you'd like us to have, and probably answer a question or two.
My name is Connie Roundtree, I have signed the conditional commercial lease at that location. My home address is 316 Joshua Tree Lane, Martinez, Georgia.
Who's your partner in crime?
I'm Katie. My address is 3025 Culverton Court in Augusta, and we're just, we're just moving from, we have, she's got an office in Action Medical Web Chiropractic, and we're just moving to this new location, is the.
Where's, where's Action Medical?
Uh, Web Chiropractic, on Bobby Jones.
211.
Any other questions?
They all striking out on your own, starting your own?
Yes, and there's only going to be two instead of three.
Okay. Thank you, ladies. This is a public hearing, is there anyone that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve, file RZ 190909, conditional use for massage at 3801 Washington Road.
Do your second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Approve carries five zero. Mr. Butler, file RZ 190910.
Another request for conditional use for massage at 1105 Fury's Lane Extension, currently zoned C2. Location of the property, again, just off of Fury's Ferry Road, down Fury's Lane. Shows the zone of the property, again, you have C2, for the existing property to the north, you have actually a split zone, C2 and P1 to the east, have more C2 to the west, again, C2 and P1 split zone, have R3 to the south. Airview of the site, again, currently developed, office pork, which is the site, and the plat of the property. In terms of the use, this one's a little different than what we normally get, this is a spa blue has opened at this location. She is not a registered massage therapist, she does not have one on staff, however, she's looking to hire one. So she's going to go ahead and put in place the conditional use for the massage therapist, she can hire one at her leisure. In terms of doing that, she still does have to have a massage operator's license, so there's still a check on that, she's not the one that's going to be doing the actual massage. We've met with her repeatedly, not repeatedly, several times, I kind of go over the whole process, she's very aware of that. A little different, one thing, too, that you may be seeing in the future with massages, the state has changed the state law with this. Our massage operator's license is in revision at the moment, so it may be changing in some way. The zoning side of it is going to remain at this time, potentially change, who knows, in the future. In terms of the actual use itself, staff has really no concerns with it, it's within the Bassington Road Activity, our Bassington Activity Center, again, very similar to the Martinez Activity Center, intended for commercial uses, is a commercial use, fits within that area. Again, staff recommends approval of the report.
Any questions of staff?
With the changes coming about, with the new suits, having not hired massage therapist, come back to us after the changes, if the process is leaked by them?
The MOL is still in place, so that still is, if someone came in, you know, after this is approved, that would still be there. We, the MOL is probably still going to be there, it's just what we can ask for, question?
Possible.
Possible.
Apparent to know that.
Actually, I'm not sure if we told her that directly, but, yeah, that's always a possibility.
Other questions? This is a public hearing, is the applicant here this evening? Yes, ma'am, would you come forward, give us your name, home address, any additional information you'd like us to have?
Hey, I'm Miranda, and my home address is 916 Lake Avenue, and that's in North Augusta. And I've been in business for 11 years, I used to be in Surrey Center for about five years, and then I moved downtown Augusta, and I was there for a few years, and I like this area a lot better. I just have, I'll have two, I'll have a massage operator's room, and I'll have a, I'm an esthetician, so I do facials in one of those rooms. I'll also have a room for hair, and that's it, it's a very small business.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Make a motion to approve RZ 190910.
Second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Approve carries five zero. Mr. Butler, we've got two variances tonight, file VA 190903 is our first.
This is a request for a variance to section 9953, lists a lot and structure requirements, reduce building setbacks at 5726 Wrightspur Road, it's currently zoned RA residential agricultural. This is the case of the property, again, on the south side of Wrightspur Road, just to the west of the intersection of Hamilton Road and Wrightspur. Again, it's currently zoned RA, most everything around it, again, to the west and south is zoned RA, the north, we do have the R2 subdivision that was rezoned earlier this year, and again, the S1 over here is a church. Because of the aerial view of the site, you can see it is a lot closer to the road than everybody else's. One of the things that we'll kind of go into here in a moment, this was put on the property in about 97, 98. We cannot really find where approval was given for that, again, the setback from Wrightspur Road is 125 feet from the center line, they are at less than 90 feet. Very close to the, to the road itself. The applicant's looking to add on some decks and porches to the property, none at the front, they're all at the back, however, that is an addition, or that is an expansion of the non-conforming use, does acquire the variance. This shows the existing site, also the plat of the property, lot five is highlighted there. In terms of the actual request itself, everything is behind the house or to the side, it's been there for a while, that's the other side of it. Reduction in the building setback really doesn't cause any issue, because everything is behind the front of the building. I would do have some conditions with, or recommended conditions with this, any future expansion of existing structures, whether it's to the rear or side of the structure, any future building or structure placed on the property should make building setbacks per Columbia, that includes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions of staff?
What happened if they enlarged the road?
So, one of the things, the right-of-way is already pretty big for Wrightspur Road, it's already over, it's already 100 feet. So there could be a question, however, there is quite a bit of right-of-way, our traffic department looked at it, they weren't concerned with it. Kind of further there, does it on that one?
Any other questions?
Got me a little confused there with the right-of-way, he's 80 feet from the center line now, where that home sits?
He's a, let me clarify, what was it, approximately 85 feet.
85 feet?
Under 90 feet.
And so is he in the right-of-way, did I understand that the right-of-way is 100 feet from the center line?
Yeah, the center line in total, so if you measure it from here to here, it's 100 feet.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Butler, is the applicant here this evening? Not here this evening. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve with conditions, file VA 19-09-03, reducing the front setback at 5726 Wrightspur Road.
Do your second.
Second.
Question? Favor? Approve carries five zero. Mr. Butler, our last public hearing item for tonight, file VA 190904.
Request for variances to section 9998, lists lot structure requirements, 9939 buffers and screening, and 940 landscaping, 1963 Appleton Harlem Road, currently zoned C1, over in Appleton, from the aerial view of the site, again, on the east side of Appleton Harlem Road. Because of the current zone of the property, again, Appleton has some interesting zoning within it, you have the C1 of the current property washed out. So you have R1 to the east, and also south and north and across the street, you have R1 and RA. I'll tell you guys, the difference is here, and what you got. What was that?
Hold yours up, we can all see.
We could, but it's kind of a small screen, again, you have the courthouse right here, the aerial view of the site, again, it's currently unoccupied, has been for quite some time. And one of the things that they're, what they're looking to do is, they're looking to have a shaved ice business within the property, or within the building. Because it's been unoccupied for over a year, it triggers all non-conformities on the site, and you have the building setbacks are an issue, especially on the front and the sides, you also have buffers, and also the landscaping is more of a, not really a concern, but we've included it for the request. In terms of what they want to do to the property, I'll let the applicant kind of get more in-depth with how they want to do this. They have shown us kind of what the character of the development will be, again, Appleton is a historic area, if we're being honest about it. So it does have a unique character for it, they are definitely going to meet some of those requirements there, not requirements, but some of the ideas behind that. They do have some outdoor areas that they're proposing, we'll see in the site plan in a moment, as well as some landscaping they're adding to the property. Again, with the request itself, we're looking, here's the plat as well, this shows a sketch plan they're looking to do, they do have, they're, are proposing to add a covered deck here, and have an outdoor seating area in this area. One of the things that we're looking at here is the front setback is a turn, as well as the side setbacks. You saw before that you had R1 on the north and south side of the property, those are both owned by the government, you have Board of Education owns this one here, Board of Commissioners owns this one here. So neither one of those properties is zoned appropriately, I mean, they're both used for office uses, it could be C1 or RP1, to be able to kind of match what the use is.
Board of Ed is going to be vacating those properties, aren't they, and moving over to the Greenfield Industries Building over time?
Not sure about.
IT department's here, or the IT department is?
What about that, the Board of Education's out of it, couldn't tell you.
This is the old post office building.
It is the old post office building, that's correct. So in terms of the uses, they're there, you know, they really are, should be functioning in a similar manner to the C1, so again, reductions in the setbacks on both those, on both sides of the property are really no concern. I would do have a condition to speak, what those reductions will be, with that, again, you have three feet on the sides here, the front, one of the things with that is they requested, I'm right, I always have to look at the numbers. They requested 90 feet, one of the things that we would rather do is reduce it down to. One of the things that we would rather do is reduce it down to 80. They may be doing some work in the front, want to give a little more flexibility to be able to do that. We don't know the exact location of the building. Again, giving a little more on the front there would probably be a better option to come in and actually do on the property. In terms of buffers, again, because it is zoned C1, you would have a 20-foot buffer against both sides of the property here. Again, like I said before, those are both used more for commercial uses. So neither one of those are really required. However, the applicant does have, they are going to provide their own buffer here and along the sides, so that is going to kind of accomplish that goal anyway. But we do have one condition with that. The back of the property, they're not proposing to go in, go in and do any disturbance. However, we do have a condition that speaks to, do go in and disturb it or do any work back there, it will remain at 20 feet and be supplemented as required, if they disturb it. The last thing, again, this is the existing site. We do have a condition regarding the building elevations and materials. For any new construction, it must be approved by the planning commission prior to its availability. Right? Again, this does show the, this is the side setback on the property. You can see it is very close to that side property line. And again, we've already gone through all the conditions as before, but again, the staff does recommend approval with the conditions. Again, alternate landscape plan must be submitted and approved prior to approval of construction plans. There is, in which implementation of the plan can be done within six months of plan approval. And again, elevation materials require approval by the planning commission. Front building setback reduced to 80 feet, side building to 3 feet, and rear setback remains at 20, and rear structural buffer remains at 20 feet, and will be something that is needed if disturbed. Include staff recommendation.
Are there any concerns from the Historical Society about changes to the building, the facade, or anything?
So it is not a designated...
It's not.
...site. So I mean, there's really, there's no control from them at all.
Okay.
You know, the owner could put stipulations on it if they wanted to. I mean, that's, but we haven't heard anything.
Okay. Gentlemen, any other questions to staff? The applicant here. Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Please give us your name and home address.
I'm just going to rant. My name's Chris Herman. I live at 6104 Gray Road. My wife and I are planning on opening this up as a really a community hangout area. I mean, there's nothing in Appleton. We're plugged into the group out there. My daughter goes to school there. My wife was on the PTO for several years, go to Kioki Church. So our idea is to have a place here that people that live out in that area can come in evening time or afternoon and have a shaved ice. It'll mostly be, it'll be outdoor seating. We're not going to have indoor, any indoor seating, so I don't know if you've been down to Pelicans in Grove Town, but picture that, but maybe nicer. You know, it's going to be nicer sitting area. We're going to have outdoor tables. We're going to have a covered patio, so keep you out of the sun while you're ordering and that kind of thing. So there's work to do on the building, so we'll have roof repairs and there were issues that we got to deal with as we go forward, but idea is to clean up that area, make it really nice, and make it a place that people can come and gather. We spoke to Donna, the executive director over at Columbia County Care. She doesn't see any issues with it. So we haven't talked to anybody of the surrounding neighbors. The property to the north is actually that little park that has the one-room school, so there's nothing there on that property to the north. Serving food.
Business will be conducted outdoors and walk up.
Yep.
Any, will you own, owning or renting?
I'm renting the space.
Space. So you're obviously only going to use it?
About a third of it, yeah.
A third? So is there some type of plan for the other two thirds?
Well, I mean, there's lots of options there. I could be connected to internet and kind of shared office space. There's lots of options right now. We don't have anything, but I don't plan on serving food. I don't want to work that hard. No, that's kind of my theory. So like, it's a whole different level of effort than what I would want to make out there at this point.
Okay. Any other questions?
Shaved ice is not food.
No, there's no cooking involved.
Okay.
There's, it's, you shave the ice, and you actually shave blocks of ice. So you make the ice and you shave it, so it's not like a snow cone. It's like a snowball that you put flavorings on and some, that's milk or even heavy cream they mix in there. If you go to Louisiana, they'll mix some other stuff in there.
Is this something that you have experience with? Have you had shaved ice?
I like to eat.
Sure, and I'm from Louisiana. I know all about shaved ice.
I do not, but I've looked at it for a long time from a business perspective. Kind of a serial entrepreneur. I used to own a bunch of franchises for a shipping company, sold those, and I'm a broker, great broker, but my wife and I ran those for almost 20 years. So we've always looked at shaved ice thinking it's a good way, good family business, good clean, easy business that you can go to. There's three Pelican franchises here. We tried to call them a franchise, but nobody thought that Evans or Appleton could support a franchise, so we just thought we'd do it on our own.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Yes, sir. Give us your name and home address.
Good evening. My name is Vince Cooper. I'm at 5555 White Oak Road, Appleton, Georgia. My wife and I are the shareholders of Historical Preservation LLC, which is the entity that owns the building in question. Having been a resident of Appleton for 13 years, real excited to see the Hermans putting together a proposal to put a family-oriented business downtown and put good use to that property. We're very willing to work with the county and the Hermans to help give whatever authorization is required, help them make their dream come true, and help the community. And my wife and I are also both former members of the Historical Society, and this is something that we're working towards for years. We'd love to see Appleton take on a unique look, kind of help present that historical perspective that we'd like to share with the community and tourists, and we're just real excited for them. So we support these good people, and we think they're people of good character. We'd like to see them succeed. Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve with conditions, file VA 190904.
Go ahead, your second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Good luck. We have no text amendments tonight, no additional added items. We have no legal matters. Do we have any staff or commissioner comments?
I have one question. On the, both the RZ 190904 and also the landscape plan, we had an approval, but no mention of condition.
I just, I just made a motion with conditions just now.
Yeah. Was there a desire to add conditions to both of those as part of that motion? Or was it just straight approval for both?
I think whatever conditions.
I just read the, I mean, I just read the pre-bitten condition, was it?
Yeah.
But the one we just did had conditions. That's, that's one you're talking about.
Well, I'm talking about from back in the meeting, 1994, which was the cell stores.
Where I'm looking at 190904 is what we talked about.
Oh, four.
No, we got, we got ones in RZ and ones in VA.
Oh, four was the first one we did.
So we missed the conditions on the first one?
Drop the conditions.
That's my question.
That's what he's asking.
Did you mean to have conditions or not?
Yes.
Do we need to open the floor for reconsideration on that?
Yes, it would be on both of those. And that's my fault. I should have mentioned it when it happened, but...
Would the gentleman ask to reconsider your motion and make the amendment? File RZ 190904.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I asked to reconsider the motion.
Change your motion how?
I can change it?
To clarify.
Yes, sir. If you made the motion, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
You made the motion, okay, so we need you...
I probably need to be the one to...
So let's vote to reconsider, all in favor to reconsider. Well, actually, the motion was made. Go ahead, your second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All in favor of reconsideration? All right. Now, will the gentleman make his motion and include...
I'd like to make a motion to approve RZ 190904 with conditions for rezoning as stated.
Go ahead, your second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Approve carries 5-0.